We're going to open up the meeting of the, a joint meeting of the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. Everybody, we don't, we have a forum. We will introduce the board members in a few minutes. I'm going to open the meeting only because the zoning, the zoning board is the lead agency for this, but we also have the chair of the planning board, Steve Moreno, to my left. I'd like to welcome all the attendees and I'd also like to thank the town of Phillips Town for letting us use their meeting hall as our, Village of Nelsonville meeting hall is rather small. A lot of you are, are new to the meeting. We've had several meetings. This process started out back in August and we've seen an increased amount of attendance and interest in this. So I am going to summarize where we've been and where we're going. But like I said, I hope you all have the agenda. And there'll be plenty, like Steve said, there'll be plenty of time for the public to make comments. This is a public hearing. But first, we're going to take care of the board's business. We're going to let the applicant make their presentation and we're going to listen to our village consultants. They have some reports and comments. And then we'll get to the public question and comment. Just for your information, we'd like the public to keep their comments focused, three to five minutes at most. When someone is speaking or giving testimony, and I'm saying that not in a legal term, but it's used quite often, when people are speaking, no one in the audience may interrupt them unless the board may ask them to pause and qualify one of their statements. So, I have a lengthy list of documents that the boards have received since our last meeting and I'm going to read it quickly, but it's important that the public knows what we've received, when we've received it, and what the subject matter was. So that's what we're going to do right now. And I'm going to introduce the new documents of correspondence that have been provided to the board since our last meeting. We have a letter from the applicant's attorney, Snyder and Sn- Snyder. We got that actually November 1st at the beginning of our last meeting. We didn't have time to really absorb it, so I'm going to list it again. There was a number of attachments on October 31st from Homeland Towers. It was a supplemental area analysis from Vincent Xavier, who is the applicant, Vincent here tonight. And we had asked, and as they are bound to do by the zoning code, to look at alternate sites and altered locations. This October 31st letter looked at mounting antennas on four churches in the Phillips Town area. Vince said that these, that it was infeasible to actually do that for technical reason and for, and for historic preservation reasons. We have an October 30th letter from CBRE, who is an historical consultant to the applicant. Her assessment was collating telecommunications equipment within the four steeples is not feasible due to historic preservation reasons. We have a letter from, on October 27th, from PeerCon Solutions, who analyzed the alternate sites that the board was required them to look at. One is the Seeker site. It's a hun- it's a 120-foot tower. It was recognized as a feasible alternate to what we're here to talk about tonight, which is the 15 Rockledge Road cell tower application. 50 Fishkill Road was also analyzed, even as a 200-foot tower, it was deemed not feasible. In that packet was also contained photographs of a 130-foot monopine in Somers, New York, that anybody in the public can go see. And also a photograph of a 120-foot monopole or monopine in North Salem. That was, and I believe most of this information is on the Nelsonville website. On November 13th, we have a letter from Cuddy and Fetter, their attorneys for AT&amp;T. They provided an inventory of AT&amp;T's existing tower sites within a 10-mile radius, as they are required to do by the zoning code. On October 21st, we received a report from Ron Grave, our RF consultant. He had looked at the ATT and submission of June 9th, 2017, in reference to the radio frequency justification report prepared by Daniel Penesso on behalf of AT&amp;T. His analysis was that AT&amp;T does suffer gaps in service, but asks for some limited digital information to be acquired from the applicant. On November 7th, a report again from Ronald Grave, our RF consultant, reviewed the October 27th PeerCon Solution analysis of an alternate sites, prepared by Adam Feeham, another RF engineer, looking at again the Seeker site. As Ron said, the Seeker site, the coverage is compatible, and I'm giving you just a little synopsis of this. All this is on the website, you can read it in full. But his, the little summary is the coverage is compatible to the Rockledge site. He did ask for some additional exhibits. 50 Fishkill Road, the town highway barrage, the 200 feet, the 200-foot tower. Ron said it does not appear to provide coverage. On November 14th, CBRE sent us a letter from Laura Mancuso. She's the director of cultural resources at CBRE. In her letter, she wanted to differentiate between areas of potential effects, shortened to APE, noting there was a, a difference between, between direct effect and visual effects in the, her historic analysis. She analyzed the project under the National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106, which is required by the federal communications agents, excuse me, agency. Just a couple more. On November 15th today, Snyder and Snyder, we received a, a letter regarding the right-of-way. Those attorneys suggest that this issue is not relevant to the zoning board's consideration in reviewing the special permit application from Homeland Towers. And again, today, we did receive an email, a large email attachment, was sent to the village regarding the history of the Cold Spring Cemetery, including, including email correspondence to William Prettinger of Shippo from Francis O'Neil, who was heading up to save the cemetery committee, and she may speak to that later. Also included in that correspondence was four photos of the balloon test and one photo from an unidentified backyard in Nelsonville. And that, at some point, will be on the website. Now, we do have one more item that we received, which is a whole series of emails from local residents that we received, I believe, yesterday. Also a letter from, again, the, the Seeker site is, is really peripheral to this hearing tonight, but the Haldane Superintendent wrote a letter to the, the village mayor and trustees indicating, as you all know, she's not in favor of the Seeker site. We also have a letter from the Cold Spring, the Village of Cold Spring, let's get this right, Historical District Review Board, they're not in favor of the tower either at Rockledge or on Seekor. And then a series of emails from local residents in the Phillips Town area, Nelsonville, Cold Spring, that are opposed to both sites. And at some point, we'll get this to Robert and Steve.
We've received it.
Oh, you have received it. Perfect. Okay. So there you have it. Next on the agenda, I want the board, the both boards to introduce themselves, take a little bit of a roll call. I believe we have a, a forum. And why don't we start from left and we'll move to right.
Well, Al Bach, planning board. Dennis Meekins, planning board.
Peggy Clement, zoning board of appeal.
Susan Brianigan, planning board.
Steve Moreno, planning board.
I'm William Rice with the zoning board of appeals.
Judy Meyer, zoning board of appeals.
Chris Keely, zoning board of appeals.
Steve Miranda, zoning board of appeals.
I'd like the applicants to identify themselves as you wish, in whatever order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder, on behalf of Homeland Towers and New York SNSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. I'll ask each one of our principals and consultants to introduce themselves.
Thank you.
Starting with Mr. Vicente.
I'm Manny Vicente. I am the owner and CEO of Homeland Towers.
Thank you.
I'm Matt Allen, Saratoga Associates. I'm responsible for the assessment of visual impacts on behalf of Homeland Towers.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Adam Feeham from PeerCon Solutions, RF engineer on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
And Vincent Xavier, the regional manager for Homeland Towers.
Thank you.
Daniel Penesso, RF engineer for AT&amp;T. Anthony Miranda, I'm an attorney at the law firm of Cuddy and Fetter.
I'm Steve Skina, JNC wind site engineer.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. I'd also like to introduce the village attorney, Bob Sardi. Our village engineer, Ron Gaynor. Ron Grave, our RF consultant, could not be here tonight, he's in Atlanta. Okay, so why are we here? And I'm just going to go through briefly because there's a lot of new members of the audience and the zoning board has responsibilities, as does the planning board, but they're different. The only reason the zoning board has taken the lead is because they've been assigned to take the lead on the Seeker application. And that's why we're right up to now leading the meeting. Now, what is?
Can you just clarify, Seeker versus Seekor?
Oh, Seeker, yeah.
There's some whispers right there, just to make sure.
Yeah, you know, I, I caught myself saying that. Seeker is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. It's an environmental act that protects the many, many, many sites from destruction by development. There it is. Yeah, the Seeker site is right over here, as many of you know. Okay, but the Rockledge site is, it's a nine, it's a 9.6 acre wooded site directly east of the 30-acre Cold Spring Cemetery. And furthermore, the Village of Nelsonville zoning code, Article 7, Commercial Communication Towers, Section 18868, allows commercial cell towers to be built in Nelsonville in four particular districts, subject to a special permit. And that's, that's why we're here tonight, to look at that. We're also looking at a variance, and that variance is, it's really not, it's New York State Village law. We're also going to address that. Now, what does the applicant have to do to get this passed? They have to submit radio plots depicting the anticipated radio frequency levels and coverage of the proposed site. I'll name a few of them. The number of the proposed antennas on the cell tower, the height of the proposed tower, which happens to be limited to 110 feet in Nelsonville. Let's see, another one, some of the big ones. A long form EAF, which again is another environmental impact statement, which they have done. Report by a qualified engineer regarding the electromagnetic radiation from the proposed site, we have received that. And again, from the Nelsonville code, the board may require the use of a camouflage communication tower, and that's what we're talking about this evening. Now, from a, from a planning board view, you want to look at that?
Sure. I'll take that from there. As part of this process, the applicant requires a special permit under zoning for putting a cell tower in the village. And as part of that process, the applicant is also required to get a site plan approval from the planning board. So it's two separate processes, we're running them both concurrently. The zoning board will be looking at issues of appropriateness and conformance with zoning, compliance with zoning. As William mentioned, there are certain things that are required in order to put a cell tower in one of the four zones where it's allowed. There is a list in the, in the code that, what those things are. Once it's determined that the, the cell tower is appropriate under zoning as proposed, then the planning board will make decisions based on issues like landscaping, fencing, access to the property, fire protection, noise, lighting, other kinds of community character issues that come up. We do not look at, again, we don't look at the appropriateness of the use, that will have already been decided by the zoning board. We won't make a decision until after the zoning board has made their decision. I think, I think there are several aspects of the code. 188-71 is specific to cell towers. There are other parts of the code, 188-30 through 36, that discuss the kinds of questions that we should be raising in terms of site plan appropriateness for projects in the village. And that's, so that's kind of what we're looking at. Stormwater, other things like that, the kind of things that we're looking at as part of this process.
Okay, thanks. It'd be surprising to know that cell towers are allowed in the village secondary residential district, the hillside residential district, the mountain residential district, and the multifamily residential district. The applicant's property is in the mountain residential district.
Mr. Villala, just handled it with this letter, I don't know how.
Well, we can enter into the record.
Was it at this point, but you just got that you?
Mr. Villala is a neighbor. We'll distribute this letter. This letter is from Blanchard and Wilson Attorneys, and we'll read it after the meeting. Or enter it into the record anyway. All right, I think now we can have the applicant make their presentation and summarize where we are, if you don't mind.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to touch on a, because this is the first public hearing, I'd like to touch on a few of the details that maybe you didn't already do a, a good job of presenting, the fact that we are in the permitted zone by special permit, the mountain residential zone, that it is a 9.63 acre property. We have the, we do have the site plan mounted, if anyone's interested in that. There are a number of different other requirements of your code, particularly things like height that you mentioned. The height limit is 110 feet, and we are proposing a facility that meets that height. There's also a requirement that the side yard setback be 125% of the height, or 137.5 feet, and we, we do meet those setback requirements. There's actually a special setback requirement of 300 feet for a habitable structure, and we do meet that setback requirement, including the one acre parcel size requirement that, obviously, for 9.6 acres, we meet that requirement. What we've, what we've shown is a, a proposal to come off Moffett Road and then cross through two different, what we call right-of-way easements on two different parcels, and we've surveyed that and shown that on the plan. And as part of our initial application, and I'll touch on this a little bit more later, we submitted a letter from our title company showing that they would ensure title, including access to the parcel, including the deed for the parcel, and also the deeds that contain the right-of-way easements to allow access to the property. And that's important because we're asking for an interpretation that we do not need a variance from New York State Village law, but if we do, that we do have it across, actually filed with the county, actual easements and deed descriptions for that, that right-of-way on those two parcels. We've submitted a, a number of documents throughout the process that I'd like to touch on briefly. I know that radio frequency exposure is always a big issue, and a lot of the comments in the application were related to that. That is an issue that the federal government has preempted from local review, provided we meet the federal requirement. And what we did is we had a third-party engineer prepare a report that showed with the two applicants, AT&amp;T and Verizon, and hypothetically with Sprint and T-Mobile, who are not on this application, but we know they do operate in the area, and with an emergency service antenna, that all combined, worst-case conservative calculation, the facility would be at 2.76% of the allowable 100% limitation. So about, you know, so 20 times below the applicable limit, I'm sorry, 2.76 percentage points. We also looked at the facility from an FAA standpoint, to make sure that we didn't have any hazard to air navigation, and we showed with a, with an expert report and confirmation from the FAA that there would be no hazard to air navigation. The facility would not require any FAA lighting and, and no FAA marking, and we think that's important. We did a structural certification. Again, we did a worst-case scenario, we looked if, we only had two carriers, but we looked at a possibility of five, and that we would build the tower to support that co-location to avoid the proliferation of the additional towers in the future. We did two different radio frequency engineering studies, one for AT&amp;T and one for Verizon Wireless. And what we showed was the existing coverage of each of the carriers, and I think your own consultant, Mr. Grave, had looked at that and confirmed that both of them had significant gaps in the area. And the, and the point of the AT&amp;T report was they had, they had a site at Butterfield Hospital that was decommissioned when the, when the work was done over there, and Verizon Wireless has never had a site in this area. And these maps also showed all the different frequency ranges. For example, 700 megahertz propagates better, meaning that it covers a greater distance. But we also showed what it would be like if you were using a phone in a car or in a building, because that has different characteristics. And we prepared numerous maps, and again, you have your own consultant review that as well. We looked at, we looked at a number of alternatives, and right in the beginning, we did a map showing the spots in, in the village where we couldn't go under your code. Because not only are they permitted in certain zones, but in the VR, VB, and C zones, it's strictly prohibited. So we looked at those areas that we couldn't go in. We talked about the fact that cemetery wouldn't lease to us. We talked about the fact that we looked at the DPW property and, and originally, we didn't get a response, and then we did get somewhat of a response, so we looked at that from a technical standpoint. We looked at the fact that the code also requires a 50-foot vegetative buffer around the facility. And that's hard to find a piece of property to be able to support that, and we are able to do it with the way we laid it out. And that will also tie into a little bit about the access road that we'll talk about in a moment. We did do the full EAF, we've revised it once, we did the visual EAF addendum. We did originally a visual resource assessment for Mr. Allen, who's here tonight, and that was without a balloon test. Actually, nowadays, you can do it through computer modeling, and it's actually somewhat, it's very accurate, if not more accurate than the balloon, because the computer knows the height and the location. The balloon sometimes moves around, and we did visual renderings showing various locations. We also did a view shed map showing where the facility would theoretically be visible from with and without vegetation and structures. And we, and we did visual rendering showing the stealth structure that's required to be reviewed by your code, which we did propose, which in this case was the monopine structure. Obviously, the site plan, we've, we've been working on and updating. There were some changes based, particularly on some planning board comments as far as showing the tree removal on the, on the actual site plan. We've increased and detailed the stormwater management. We've proposed an alternative access drive based on a, a site visit, and we appreciate members taking the time to go out there and do the site visit. And that's something really that's probably in the purview of, of the planning board, but because of that 50-foot vegetative buffer, we would have to go into that area with an access drive that's an alternative, a little bit closer to the one property line, although it's on a little bit of an easier spot to be able to construct them. And we're happy to discuss those, those engineering details and further details as the process moves along, particularly, you know, with respect to the, to the planning board's preference on that. And then, and then mitigate any tree removal with, with appropriate landscaping. We have no objections to that. Detailing on some of the items, Mr. Chairman, that you mentioned, the Vincent Xavier supplemental report went into detail on those four churches, also confirmed that both AT&amp;T and Verizon are on all the existing towers in the area, so it's not that we're overlooking the tall structure. It also confirmed there are no other appropriate tall structures in the area to use. We did do that, that additional PeerCon report based on your engineers' comments, looking at 50 Fishkill Road, which even at 210 feet, which would require FAA lighting, it doesn't provide the coverage down into this area, whereas Two Secret Street actually does. And one of the original comments by Mr. Grave was that the proposed site at 15 Rockledge left some areas down by the river uncovered, and actually, Two Secret Street gets better into that area. So, actually, Two Secret Street has some advantages in that regard. We did provide those photographs of the site in Somers and the site in North Salem, and the reason it's important, it's, it's both AT&amp;T and Verizon, and it was a Homeland Tower application. So it was the exact same applicants as you have, and the manufacturer was the same as the one who we proposed here. There was questions, I think we have some, some specific expertise on the board as far as architecture and, and landscape planning and things of that nature. So we actually had the manufacturer show not only the structure of the tower, but show exactly the length of the proposed branches, how we staggered them, more to the design of the North Salem project that we, we submitted photographs to. Gives it a little bit more natural and, and different type of branch length, a different location type of look. We, we agreed in my letter back at, at the last meeting, we had put in the letter based on your engineers' comments and based on also the town building inspector and the fire department's comments about the right-of-way, and we are willing to upgrade the right-of-way, upgrade that access drive. We have no objection to doing that, and I'll talk about that in the title letter as well. There was a concern that the existing access to the home isn't up to spec, and we're happy to bring it up to spec. We also agreed to, you know, further revise the plans based on the technical comments of Mr. Gaynor, things like stormwater management and site lines and, and various things. And that, a lot of that engineering really is based on, with the planning board and, and the zoning board as well, decides on the access drive, which access drive is better, and then we can, we can come up with a final design. But we've provided preliminary designs for the alternative, which we show that it would work, and we can certainly, we can certainly engineer it, it's not a problem. We also agreed, as required by the code in my letter, to keep the tower in good order of repair and have it removed within four months, as required by your code, if it ever becomes obsolete. Today, we did submit a, a, a letter from my office in response to a prior letter from a neighbor, challenging the applicability of the right-of-way, particularly bringing utilities into it. And just to summarize what we had to say about that, the use of the property, as I mentioned before, it is a special permit use, and that's a use permitted as of right, provided we meet the criteria, and that's, that's New York State law. But that really has nothing to do with access. And what we showed is that when you have a, a right-of-way, unless it specifically limits the use of the right-of-way, so if the right-of-way said ingress and egress only and nothing else, then it would be limited, you wouldn't be able to bring utilities. Unless it has that specific limitation, it's understood that obviously you're allowed to bring utilities in, and that's the purpose of the subdivision. And the subdivision goes back, if you look at the deeds, the deed to the one property is from 1968, the deed to the other property is, I believe, 1971. So the idea is that when those parcels were cordoned off, it was expressly understood that we didn't want to leave, or the owner at the time didn't want to leave our parcel with no access, no ability to bring utilities in. It was shown on, in our title letter, we actually included the original subdivision maps that are filed with the county that shows how the septic would be set up. So it was set up as a buildable lot, obviously. So we believe that not only is the right-of-way, you know, usable for us, we're allowed to upgrade it, we're allowed to bring utilities in, and most importantly, what we concluded in, concluded with was a case from 2009 from the town of Greenberg, that the issue of a dispute over a right-of-way or something like that between two parties, particularly in the road instance, because that's what the Greenberg case was about, that's not for your board to sort out. That's a, that's a matter of private litigation between parties, so that's possibly fortunately for you, not an issue that you have to decide who has the particular right to a right-of-way. We, we've done a couple other things since the last meeting. Most importantly, the boards asked for an actual balloon test, so folks can go out there. And what we did is we took photographs from that balloon test, and we did it with really the proper methodology, the proper, you know, lens, you know, equivalent to a 50 millimeter with a digital camera. We took it, we, we produced photographs, you know, to show what the balloon would look like from various locations. We were specifically asked to take other locations, we did that. We also did, because we've said that Two Secret Street is, is a viable alternative from an engineering standpoint, we haven't confirmed that we can obtain a lease, and we haven't confirmed certain other due diligence on it. But what we wanted to do as well is show you from an aesthetic standpoint what it would look like. So we took the liberty of doing some visual renderings of Two Secret Street. So what I have with me tonight is some, and I don't expect you to digest it tonight, obviously, but we, we put that into a report, and we'd like to submit that to the record, so you have those photographs, you have the Two Secret Street visual renderings to look at for next time. Mr. Xavier will hand out copies to everybody for that.
It's on the, it's on the web section.
These, and, and we had submitted them by email, and, and so these are some, some additional photographs that I think are very helpful. The Two Secret Street renderings are in the back, and we took one from right out here, and we took one from the corner, and it blends in very well when you look at the renderings. One of the things, one of the, one of the things about-
All right. Everyone didn't get a chance to speak.
Everyone will get a chance to speak. I believe you. You'll all get a chance to speak.
One of the things about the balloon test, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. One of the things about the balloon test is that the facility is at 110 feet, but the balloon is actually at 120 feet. So when you see the photographs, the balloon is actually 10 feet higher than what the top of the facility would be. And that was at the request of your engineer to make sure that we, you know, showed a worst-case scenario, that if it was just at the tree line, it would pop up, and you'd be able to see where it was. So the balloon is actually 10 feet higher than what it would be in reality. The Secret Street was done without the balloon, it was done on the basis of that same computer modeling that we mentioned before, and that's accurately based on what's proposed at that location if it were to go forward there. We also received comments from Mr. Grave saying that he just wanted to see a simpler coverage map showing exactly what Two Secret Street and 50 Fishkill Road would look like on their own without the surrounding coverage. So what we did is we actually had Mr. Feen, who's here tonight, prepare those maps. I did send them to Mr. Gainer and Mr. Grave by email, because I knew he was out of town, but we brought extra copies. And again, I don't expect you to digest that tonight, but when you look at it, you can see that Two Secret Street does get down into the village area. It does provide that service. 50 Fishkill Road does not.
Which village?
Of both, actually. And that's, and that was, and the only reason I say that, you know, radio frequency doesn't respect lines of municipalities, right? But it was a comment from Mr. Grave that the 15 Rockledge did leave a space down by the river. So ironically, Two Secret Street does cover that area. With that, Mr. Chairman, I actually would be happy to answer any questions and reserve maybe some time at the end, based on the public comment, to respond accordingly.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I could ask a question now, though, Mr. Guardio.
Yes.
Guardioso.
Yes.
One of the questions that's certainly come up during these whole discussions is this idea of there being a gap.
Sure.
And we've heard from the public on a number of occasions that they don't experience a gap, so they don't really understand where the gap is and why a tower in this, any of these locations we're talking about are necessary. So I was wondering if you could somehow talk about the idea of there being a gap, how that gap is identified, what the FCC says about requirements to fill gaps or allowances to fill gaps. This way, everybody has an idea of why you're making the case that the tower is necessary at all.
Sure.
Regardless of which location we're talking about.
I think that's a great question, and the only part of it I'll take exception with is that actually, at some of the meetings, some folks, and I think even some board members, had indicated that they do have problems having service. And our engineers have experienced that, and that's how these things come about. But what, with the basis of the gap comes from, is federal law in 1996 said that a municipality preserves its local zoning authority, but it's limited in certain ways. It cannot unreasonably discriminate, meaning that if you allow one carrier to do one thing, and another carrier wants to do a very similar thing, you have to let them do that. You can't unreasonably discriminate. That's really not at play here. It also says that you have to act within a reasonable period of time, and ultimately, FCC came out with an order that said that that's presumptively 150 days. We're not talking about that either at this point. The FCC also said, I'm sorry, Congress also said that you cannot make your decisions on the basis of the environmental effects from radio frequency emissions, provided we meet the FCC guidelines, which, as I mentioned before, we're well within those guidelines. And finally, what the FCC said then is that if you do deny an application, it has to be based on substantial evidence contained in the written record. And what that means is that if you had a really good reason to deny the application, and you did deny the application, it would have to be based on evidence in the record. And then the final thing that Congress said was that even if you do have a good reason to deny an application, you cannot ultimately prohibit service. That's all Congress said. The courts took that statement, you may not prohibit service, and they started to define it. And what they said is that if a wireless carrier has a significant gap in service, and the proposal was the least intrusive means of closing that gap, then even if you had a good reason to deny it, it shall be approved. And that's what the court said. And how do they define significant gap? Well, every court defines it slightly different, and no one has said this is a significant gap. What they have said is that the methodology to go about looking at it is what we've done, which is based on good engineering data, propagation maps, RF expert reports, having your own consultant review it. That's the methodology to do it. What do you, what do you look at? What is significant? Courts haven't said this is significant. Well, what they said is that, you know, if you have a wide downtown village, a transportation corridor, a major road, more than a few houses on the end of a cul-de-sac, that's basically a significant gap. And then they talk about what's the least intrusive means. Well, does it comply with the code? Do you need a height variance? Do you need a setback variance? Do you comply with the criteria of the code as far as being least intrusive? Or is there a better spot that complies better with the code? And they look at those type of factors. So there's not a, there's not a per se definition, but there's a lot of case law, particularly in this area, about what is and what isn't a significant gap, and how you go about evaluating these things. And that's really your job. That's your job to evaluate, you know, whether you have substantial evidence to approve the application or deny it. The issue of prohibition, though, and a significant gap, and a least intrusive means, that's really for the courts. That's only if it gets to court, then the court would decide these issues. There's not a requirement of the applicant to prove a significant gap as part of this process. It's not a requirement of the applicant to prove that it's the least intrusive means. So you ask me, why do we do that? Well, we're doing it because if you did find a good reason to deny the application, we would have our record to go to court. But more importantly, because of what you just said, Mr. Chairman, is that people are going to say, well, why are you doing it? Why should we approve this? So by the very nature of that inquiry, by the very nature of your code, we're showing why we need to do this. And we've shown with those coverage maps from two different carriers, the expert reports from two different engineers, and then confirmation of that from the third-party engineer that you hired, that there is a gap and there is a need. And then how do we fill the need? What sites are possible, just from an engineering standpoint? And we've showed, obviously, that our proposed site is possible. That's why we brought it. We've also agreed that one of the alternatives that was raised from an engineering standpoint will fill the gap. We've shown that a couple of other options and alternatives do not work. We've looked at the requirements of your own code to look at other tall structures to show that they're either not feasible, or for some reason or another, they will not fill the gap. We've looked at other sites like 50 Fishkill Road and other properties in the area. The original Xavier alternative site analysis looked at under your zoning code, the one-acre or less sites that don't meet the code, the setback requirements, the three different zones that are not permitted. And we've looked at all these different locations, and that's how we've come up with basically the two locations that are part of the discussion now. So to answer your question, I know it was a long answer, in short, though, it's engineering, it's based on design criteria, it's the RF maps, it's all the data that goes into it, the expert testimony, and most importantly, you know, your consultant is doing a third-party review of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on this, Steve?
Sure.
Is there, is there another metric of what's an acceptable gap, though? I mean, significant gap at four houses on a cul-de-sac, sounds like almost any gap is going to be a significant gap.
Just the opposite. The court said, the court said that it's a fact-by-fact determination, right? So the court said what's not a significant gap is if you had like a dead spot consisting of a few houses at the end of a cul-de-sac. That would not be significant, and the court's point, okay? The courts have also said, though, that if you have a main road, like 301 or Route 9, or Route 9D, that's a factor that's very important if you have a transportation corridor. If you have a downtown area, we have a lot of users, that's very important. If you have businesses, that's very important. These are different factors that go into it. I think when you look at what we've submitted to the record and what I think your consultant has agreed with, is that the, not only the breadth of the gap is significant, meaning the size of it, but also what's inside of that gap. So if we were proposing a big tower to cover the side of a mountain that no one lived on and there were no roads, the size of that gap might not matter. So it's basically the size of the gap, but it's also what's in there. How many users are in there? And this is a very important area. AT&amp;T, again, for example, they lost Butterfield Hospital. They lost a site where they were already providing coverage and had customers. Verizon has never had a gap. The other important thing is that what does apply, the prohibition standard doesn't apply until we get to court, but what does apply is really the New York State Public Utility Standard, and that's from case law. Case law says is that wireless carriers, and this is from the highest court in New York State, that wireless carriers are deemed public utilities. So when you're going for a variance, they have a lesser standard. The typical factors of a variance of unnecessary hardship do not apply. Rather, what the court would look at and what a board is supposed to look at is really whether there is a need for reliable service and the impact on the community from that proposal, and the alternatives, economic or otherwise, that would be available. And those cases related to wireless carriers go way back to Con Edison, when Con Edison needed to build power plants. They said, well, look, every municipality will just say, no power plants, and then we won't have electricity. And those cases back in 1993 were extended to wireless carriers. So again, there's a lower standard for carriers like AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless in this context. But that's under the state law criteria and not really what we were talking about before on the significant.
So if I drive the whole breadth of Nelsonville and most of Cold Spring, 301, almost the whole extension of Nelsonville down 9D, and the only gap I have is about an eight-mile stretch, and it's very predictable on the Palisades, between exit 15 and a half-mile marker. And so those eight miles, I can't do business by phone on my way to work and on my way home. So if that's not a significant-
No, that's definitely significant.
That's definitely-
Yeah, that would be a great-
But there's no, there's no need, so it seems to be an acceptable gap.
No, I think the carriers would definitely argue that an eight-mile gap on the Palisades Interstate Parkway would be a need. Now, it's a matter of whether you can find a willing landowner to put a site there and where you would put it.
As well stake board.
And that's, and that's one of the problems in that area. But trust me when I say, they're working on it.
You had said the FCC and federal law, does the statute, is that statute?
Yes.
Or substantial evidence?
Yes, that's in the statute. That's the telecommunications act of 1986, Section 332C.
Substantial evidence.
Yes. That requires substantial evidence contained in the written record.
Pretty much standard.
Substantial evidence? It's more than a scintilla. And if you can tell me what a scintilla is, I'll be surprised, I've never figured that one out. But no, substantial evidence is substantial evidence, and it, you know, someone standing up and saying something is not substantial evidence. That's for sure. The courts have said that. Now, does it have to be an expert witness? No, but it has to be something that is more than just someone saying it. And that's very important when it comes to those types of cases.
State cases pick up on that?
Ironically, yes, because the, when the federal government put the substantial evidence test in, it was essentially the same test that New York State was already using in zoning. Ironically, other places in the country didn't have that type of standard. So the Fourth Circuit, we're in the Second Circuit of Federal Court, the Fourth Circuit down in Maryland, someone standing up and a bunch of people standing up saying something could be deemed substantial evidence if it was in front of a town board. New York State says it's just the opposite. Striving community opposition in and of itself is not substantial evidence.
Any other board comments?
I have another question. You brought up Butterfield as a gap that AT&amp;T experienced when it was taken down. Those AT&amp;T reps here, how high was the equipment that was on Butterfield? I don't remember. I moved there in '05. I don't remember a tower there.
No, it was a rooftop. It was on the rooftop.
So when we were looking for alternative sites, why did we only look at tall buildings if a rooftop worked before?
Well, it didn't cover, it didn't cover into Nelsonville. It didn't cover into that area. It was covering more of the Cold Spring area, and it was really the only thing that was in the area. When Homeland Towers proposed this for Verizon, that's why AT&amp;T is the second carrier on this. That's what AT&amp;T said, well, we'd certainly like to co-locate on it.
Well, could a couple of rooftops work instead of only looking at historic churches?
Yeah, so that's the point, is that there are no tall rooftops in this area that are in permitted zones. That was the other problem. So you would need, there are no rooftops, particularly commercial rooftops, or a hospital-type rooftop, particularly going in the area on 301 towards J Cox, let's say, which is part of the big gap area.
While you're on that, then, so I was at the meeting the other night where it sounds to me that Phillips Towns consultant is looking at McKeel's Corner again to see if that could be higher and provide an alternative to the Vineyard Site.
Yeah.
So if that were happening, would McKeel's Corner give different service into Nelsonville?
Yeah, great question. No, we actually had our consultant look at that in the report that we submitted earlier in the month. We actually showed as part of this record that even McKeel's at 210 feet would not cover into the Nelsonville area. And we actually had that in this record because the Putnam County Planning Department had asked that question.
To go that hard at 210?
No, they said 180. We went up to 210 and showed it didn't work.
Related to that, it seems like you were looking for tall buildings, but there's, we have like a lot of high spots in those spots, so what about a building just on a high spot, not necessarily a tall building?
So a lot of people think that, you know, it's the elevation, and in this area, it's not really the elevation. In this area, it's really about two main things. It's getting above the tree line, because the tree line here is thick, okay? And the tree line will attenuate the signal. And if you are in the tree line or below the tree line, you're going to attenuate the signal and get a very small area of coverage. Even with our 110-foot tower, if you look at it, the area where we're covering is pretty limited to the villages. Doesn't get past J Cox, it doesn't get, it doesn't even, from Two Secor, it doesn't even get very far up to the east. The second thing that's important, and this is really one of the most important things, is that you have all these mountains. And the reason some sites work and some sites don't, because some sites, based on the angle that they're at, they're behind a hill, or they're behind a mountain. And that's one of the big things with McKeel's. That's why in Phillips Town, McKeel's site is problematic, whereas the Vineyard Road site gets right up and down the Route 9 corridor and also further on Route 301 to the west. So that's, that's the key. It's not being blocked. And we've heard in that case, also, there was talk about Lane Gate at the town landfill. And the problem with Lane Gate, that two of the town's consultants confirmed, is that it's up against and blocked by a hill. So that's, those are the two issues. So just to be on a high spot, nothing here is more than two, two and a half, maybe three stories. Butterfield was in a wide-open area. It wasn't, it wasn't covered by trees, it wasn't set in a very dense area, and it was a hospital location, and they had antennas way up on top of the roof.
Any more board comments?
The location at, when we reviewed it at the highway department?
Yes.
50 Fishkill, was that with or without McKeel's?
It didn't make a difference, because neither, McKeel's didn't get 301 at all into Nelsonville. 50 Fishkill didn't get down into here.
Okay. So where's the, so the gap would still be in the village, even-
The gap would still be in the village.
Even at the highway department?
Even at the highway department, yeah. And the other problem is, we're looking at, we're looking at these as hypothetical heights, okay? 210 feet is not getting approved anywhere. It's going to require a light, an FAA light, it's going to require FAA marking. McKeel's was not built for 210 feet. It was built at 100 feet. Structurally, it could not be extended, we'd need a new tower. It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the height limit. The height limit in that zone is 110 feet, similar to here. So to say 210, or 190, or 180, quite frankly, is a bit of a red herring, because those are just not compliant with the code. But we looked at it as good faith to say, even if you went to that height, from a technical standpoint, it's not going to work.
And then going back to the significant gap discussion, that applies to cell phone coverage?
It applies to wireless service. It applies to wireless service.
What is included in wireless service?
So personal wireless services, which includes PCS, it includes AWS, all the different licenses that they operate at. So now you have both phone calls, you have data service, you have basically phone calls So now you have both phone calls, you have data service, you have basically phone calls over data, it's, you know, 3G, 4G, it's all combined in the networks, all these different technologies, all these different frequencies. These networks are using all of them to be able to support.
So the significant gap in 3G would be recognized as a gap that needs filling?
I believe so, absolutely.
A significant gap in 4G?
Yes, I believe so. I've never seen a case that said it wasn't, let's put it that way.
There was a comment the other night, and I know crossing over jurisdictions seems like it's not all purview to do, but it's hard for me to believe that the whole network's not connected. So the fact that we can't have a discussion about, like, what your plans are, do any more monopoles coming? Because when I saw the map today that was delivered, Phillips Town has way more monopoles than anybody else in the 10-mile radius that you could supply, and you're proposing two more.
The AT&amp;T?
The AT&amp;T maps. So you have five monopoles and some other cells.
Yeah, you know, I heard a comment once that, you know, Phillips Town had more towers than anyone. And that's just simply not true.
Then everybody in the 10-mile radius that you provided, we didn't count them out?
We only did them in the 10-mile radius, but the point being is that, on a grander scale, on a regional scale, that's just simply not true. Town Somers has just as many, if not more. Just as a comparison.
That's Somers.
Over the board.
But what is Pavaletti have? No monopoles. Not a single monopole, except one maybe in Shrub Oak that might.
Well, actually, Coleman Towers built one there. I know Verizon has a big one on top of the town, up on top of the hill overlooking the Taconic off the top of my head. I believe there's one over by Putt Lake, it's been there for a while. So, I mean, I can just think of them off the top of my head, but really, the point is that the places that they've been built in the past is very obvious. It's when you have, going back to the significant gap argument, going back to where you have users. Where do you have users? You have them on main roads, you have them on highways. So Phillips Town has Route 9 and Route 9D cutting right through them, also has 301 cutting east and west. I mean, those are main roads, and that's where the majority of the towers are located. So if you want to go through Phillips Town, you can start at the top, you know, coming down Route 9, the Schubert property, then you come down to McKeel's, you get down towards Graymore, the proposal of Vineyard Roads in the middle, but you also, you know, are trying to connect that 301 corridor, so there's the old AT&amp;T Long Lines Tower up in Forest Park. You know, you think about where they are, that's where they are. And down in this area has always been very difficult to cover this area, both geography, topography, and zoning.
Are you able to say whether either the carriers believe they need more than the two to get to seven monopoles within the Phillips Town Board?
I don't really have an answer for Phillips Town's application here in Nelsonville. I think if you look at the maps to Nelsonville, you can see there's very good coverage based on what's being shown to cover the village. It's not a large village. I can feel comfortable to say that, you know, there's not seven towers on the drawing board right now in Nelsonville. But, you know, beyond that, obviously, you know, I couldn't tell you what's predicted elsewhere.
Any other board comments?
One more. In the original meeting we had in, was it August at this point? In the original meeting in August, we talked about the submission from AT&amp;T's RF expert that was provided, or dated June, and it had six licenses that had expired actually in July. And we discussed in August that the village code requires up-to-date licenses. If we're going back to the drawing board, AT&amp;T had those six that were expired. Last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, we got an updated from Piercom, which I understand to be Verizon's RF expert, and they submitted for six, they submitted six licenses. Were those new six from Selco Partnership submitted under Verizon's name, replacing the six expired for AT&amp;T?
No. AT&amp;T submitted updated insurance certificates. I don't know, it should be in your package. They submitted it, Mr. Laub had submitted, I saw the cover letter, that he had submitted the updated AT&amp;T licenses back in, I want to say, end of August, early September.
Okay.
They should be in your package. And those were AT&amp;T's separate licenses.
Is Mr. Laub here?
His colleagues here, Mr. Miranda.
When was that submitted?
I'm not sure the exact date, but in any.
Can you try to dig that up? I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the complete package.
Yeah, they're in the record, and we'll make sure you have them. But the AT&amp;T licenses, if they were provided with expired dates, then the current licenses will either be in the record, which I'm pretty sure they are.
Yeah.
They will provide to you. And Mr. Graves even noted in his most recent memo, I believe, it's really, in his words, that it was a non-issue. But we will confirm that for you. Thank you.
Yeah, they would definitely submit it.
Any other board comments?
I have a question on your letter regarding the easement. Just, I saw a phrase in there that says there's no limits. When there's no stated limits, do you conclude there's no limits to what you can do?
Well, there's no, there's no limits with respect to what we're talking about, which is access, upgrading the access drive to bring access to the property and.
What's the limit when there's no limits?
And bringing utilities. Well, it goes back to, because the court will look at what was, you know, what was reasonably contemplated in the mind of the grantor at the time, which in this case was, you know, 1968, 1971, access to the property, which would, you know, in and of itself require utilities. And we actually cited to a case that was literally right on point on that one. And that case was from the Third Department, I believe, which is the appellate department above the trial.
No, I'll leave it to the lawyer who's on our planning board to talk about the legal side of it. When I saw the phrase, the right-of-way easement included in the title, the letter establishes that there are no limits.
Yeah, so there are no limits with respect to what I just described.
Just that.
I mean, obviously, we couldn't build a shopping mall on the easement. I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, but just to give you an idea, I think a court would probably say that was overburdening the easement. But to bring utilities to a landlocked parcel, that was, you know, that there was a specific right-of-way easement granted with no limits contained in it.
Unlimited width of paving?
Well, to the width of the easement, obviously. Particularly if that was the town code. Now, the village code, in this case, we didn't offer to do it, but if the village wants us to do it, and that was the request, we're certainly happy to do it.
To meet safety vehicle requirement for access, those kinds of things?
Look, obviously, there's a home with, that's habitable, that has cooking facilities as compared to, you know, an unmanned facility. Nevertheless, if the request is to bring it up to that type of specification, we'll bring it up to that type of specification. The facility is unmanned, it's monitored 24/7 remotely. It's a very low-impact use as far as cars coming and going after construction. It's used maybe once every four to six weeks for them to come out and take a look at it, unless there's an upgrade or something like that. So it's not nearly the type of intensive use that even a single family holds for me.
Question about that. I guess your letter said, suggests, implies, that, we're posting, yeah, the question is obvious, but cell towers may get into the category of utilities?
Absolutely.
Can you speak a little?
Yeah, I have a stop voice, sorry. I just asked him whether cell towers may get into the category of utilities, because the letter referred to it as, you know, as long as it's a utility, they can dig underground or.
So the utilities that I was actually referring to are the electric and telephone lines going to the public utility facility on the parcel.
Right.
So we're not proposing to put a facility on the right-of-way, but to run customary electric and telephone lines to that facility, which is essentially what it is. It's basically, it's basically an electric line, 800 amps for a full build-out service. And we're proposing also underground, which the case specifically talks about, that the underground utilities are permitted. And the reason I mention underground is because, obviously, no one's going to, there'll be impact by underground utilities once they're under the ground.
So cell towers are considered to be a utility, or are they considered a right-of-way?
I don't, I don't, I don't have an opinion on that, because that's not what my letter was focusing on. My letter was focusing on traditional utilities such as telephone and electric to serve the parcel that we're supposed to go on.
Possible, then, that cell towers would be outside the category of utilities?
I'll be honest with you, I've never researched the issue, but I can tell you, the Court of Appeals, the highest court in New York State, said that for zoning purposes, wireless facilities like this are considered public utilities.
The other question I had, and that is, what came first, the right-of-way or the Nelsonville village code?
I don't know, and.
And does that?
It's irrelevant, would be my answer.
Why?
Because based on the case law that we specifically cited, restrictions and uses of easements and things of that are one issue, and zoning is a completely separate issue. The courts have specifically said that. I think we actually cited to a Court of Appeals case in my letter that made that exact statement. I think that was the Friends of Shawangong case that went to the Court of Appeals, and it's apples, it's apples and oranges. They don't overlap. That was kind of the point, is that your purview is for what's under your zoning.
Right. Yeah, the board.
I actually have a follow-up to Chris's question about, he asked you about what kind of service. I thought the other night, there was, I don't know if your firm's going to respond to comments that were made at the other hearing, where someone claimed the interpretation of federal law is only on phone service and not data transmission.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, number one, and number two, as I mentioned before, that is completely irrelevant at the administrative review level.
That would go to court, that would have to be talked in court.
That would be what's considered, if we were denied in that case, and we brought a prohibition of service claim, that would be considered a de novo review by the judge, meaning the judge would collect his own evidence, it would have nothing to do with in the administrative record.
So if we made a claim that we didn't believe or had evidence that there was no gap in phone service, and that was the reason for denial?
That would be a real bad reason, because it's not a criteria in your code, and it's not a criteria that we have to meet. And the case law in this district, particularly the White Plains decision, the T-Mobile versus White Plains decision, was crystal clear on that point. That's not a relevant issue. That's confusing the issues, basically. And in fact, again, I don't want to talk about Phillips Town too much.
The issue's pretty confusing already.
But in that case, I actually submitted a case that is very recent. I believe it was out of the Third Department or the Northern District, I think it was a Northern District case, I could be wrong. But the application was approved, the residents sued on that issue, and the court threw it out.
So that issue may be coupled with an aesthetic reason of overlooking a historic cemetery?
They're two different issues, and.
They don't start to combat each other at all?
They don't. That's, if you think about it, the federal government said, we do not want a prohibition of service. This is a very important service throughout the United States, and that's in all the legislative history. What they said is, even if there is a good reason to deny it, you've got to find a way to navigate it. And the way you find that is either approve the site or find an alternative.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Yeah, the audience may wonder whether it's on the board or, I'm asking a lot of questions. This is probably our fifth meeting. That list of letters that I read you in the beginning, you know, tests applied to the fact of all the questions we've asked in prior meetings and we've received, those responses over the past two or three months. So if the board has no more questions, I'd like, just before the public has an opportunity to speak, if I could ask, one of the most important things the zoning board does is look at the completeness of the application and everything that's in the zoning code. And I'm going to ask Ron, our village engineer, who's been looking at that, not for a likely assessment of that, but how are we doing on that? I mean, we're all aware of it, we think we're almost there, but what do you think as of having done this for so many years?
The board's got a technical memorandum from my office from the end of October. And we've tried to review the entirety of the village ordinance as it pertains to cell towers and the process, the process for the review of them. And what we've done is looked at it from both the zoning board approval process as well as the planning board requirements. My memorandum tries to break down those approval processes into the two different actions to be taken by the individual boards. Over time, the applicant has been submitting additional data to satisfy the requirements under that code. Recent information that's been provided, which just came in today, relates to the balloon testing which was required by the board of the applicant. That aesthetic impact, the visual impact, is what's further been presented tonight that needs further review from your board. As the chair has indicated, that the zoning board of appeals has assumed the lead agency status pursuant to Seeker. That process went through a coordinated review, because the planning board is another involved agency in the same application. So the zoning board is responsible to conduct the environmental review on a project. The necessary environmental documents have been filed. The requirement for the alternative exciting studies has been provided over time, has been reviewed by the RF engineer. The documents that have just come in, you obviously are responsible, obligated to review to understand those impacts. So Seeker is a significant issue that remains to be done and is still warrants further review based on the information that's still coming in through today. With respect to referrals that were mandatory, those referrals have been done, I think on the order of two months ago now. County planning was involved in this process because of its location. So necessary referrals were done, fire department input was sought and obtained. In terms of technical issues, there's technical issues that relate to both of the individual board actions that are necessary. My memorandum summarizes the technical issues that have to be addressed, that you need to review as part of the overall process, once you believe that you're prepared to move forward the application. And obviously, this public hearing was a significant part of that, to ascertain public input and take that in your deliberations. So as I said, there's technical information that we seek from the applicant that can be accommodated as the application moves forward. If there's any specific questions, I mean, I can respond.
Ron, thank you. We do have that report that, the report that you put together. We just wanted to check in with you and see what your opinion was.
Right, and obviously, you touched on it before, but you've got several reports from your independent RF engineer relating to both the original RF study on the site that's under discussion tonight, as well as the alternative sites, which are also implied.
Yes, we have those, and we've been reading them. And I think our RF consultant has made those reports fairly easy to understand. They're highly technical, but these make certain conclusions. I'm sorry, he's not here tonight to explain in a more detail.
So one of the things I feel like I, so one of the issues that's come up from public comments has been the issue about the scenic and historic value of the village, of the cemetery, things like that. I know that we have a letter from CBRE sort of making an assessment of the impact of the radio tower on, and relative to the cemetery in particular. I don't have, there's so many, I don't have it right in front of me. But has there been anything else? No offense, but like, have we, is there a way for us to get an alternate opinion, an alternate assessment about the potential impact, in particular, right into the written record, about the scenic and historic impact of the towers to the village, and in particular to this cemetery? Yeah, so what we have right now is a letter from CBRE, which, no offense, is a letter you got, and I'm wondering, is there some other letter or some other source?
You do have one of that, though, although you kind of just explained.
Is that that?
So because this is considered a federal undertaking, because it's licensed by the FCC, the applicant has to comply with the FCC regulations, because the FCC has to comply with NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. NEPA's the grandfather of secret, which is what you're, which is what you're working through. NEPA was passed by the federal government, the states enacted their own state environmental policy review act. That process has been set forth, called the 106 process.
Right.
And it requires, it requires a very detailed type of process. And we had to hire a certain person with certain qualifications.
Yes.
To find whether there were direct impacts on historical archaeological resources.
Right.
And as part of that, there was the thought that this area may be archaeologically sensitive. So we actually performed a Phase 1 archaeological test, where we dug test pits, we had certain qualified individuals do a report, no direct impact. We're not directly on a historic structure. Then we also looked at visual impacts within what's known as the APE, the Area Potential Effects. And again, that's set forth by rule about where we look. And we identified, our consultants, I should say, our experts identified 15 different resources, and they studied each and every one of those. All of that went into a package that had to be submitted to SHIPPO. And that package, we've submitted to the record, that's this package here, that's the Form 620. We submitted this, we submitted this tonight. A lot of it is what you already have, which is part of the CBRE's report. It's also the visual, the original visual resource analysis, it's our experts' report. That went to SHIPPO. SHIPPO concurred with those findings. SHIPPO's the arbiter from the state.
The State Historic Preservation Office.
On the State Historic Preservation Office. So.
Do we have that corroboration from SHIPPO?
Yes. The concurrence has been in the record.
By SHIPPO letterhead, et cetera?
They sent it by email through the.
Because I remember you all said it was going to go somewhere, but I, that's, now it's my question, I don't remember seeing that letter.
It's literally a one-page email that goes through the electronic system, they spit back to us, and it says that they concur.
Yeah, the board asked for this additional information, and now we've received it.
Yeah, I just, I remembered that we had asked for it, but I didn't remember seeing.
Yeah, we do have, we do have that email from SHIPPO that says no effect.
They concurred with the, with the report that you.
With the no effect, no adverse effect.
It went to the extent that you did seem to have the applicant provide the entire supplemental of what went to.
We were interested.
And that's what apparently has been delivered tonight.
Correct.
So that's now here for your record.
Answer my question?
And then CBRE is independent, you said?[1766.42]
We hired them, they have to have, the historians have to have certain qualifications.
How much work do they do for Homeland Towers, or?
They do a percentage of Homeland.
Have they ever, have they ever found a site not suitable?
I don't, I don't know what's come ahead, but, but SHPO has.
SHPO has.
But that's the issue that SHPO will-
So, is this a mistake that Mr. Xavier's email contact is White Plains cultural resource on the sixth line?
And an additional, an additional potential error along there is that twelve Native American tribes from Oklahoma were recognized-
No, that's not, no, actually, that's not, that's not, that's not a mistake. That, even though they're not here, they, they have, sometimes they require, through the process, to be notified.
The Ban River Band and Lake Superior Tribe of Chippewa Indians?
Yeah, I've seen ones even stranger than that.
But that email contact is a mistake on the sixth line?
And, one of, if I can see.
That's the same as Mr. Fuze's, I think, so it's not a mistake.
Yeah, she's the care of, for, everything goes to her.
His contact information, that's an exception.
Yeah, but it, it does go care of her, because she's the one that, that processes the entire situation. That's the way they do it.
Any other questions for Ron?
Just a little clarification on that. Intrigued me that there were so many Native American tribes from Oklahoma and elsewhere that seemed interested. The Keweenaw Bay Indian community said that on June twenty-third, said on June twenty-third that they had interest, because that this may attach religious or cultural significance to historic properties, which may affect the undertaking within the APE for direct and visual effects. What is their interest, and what would be the follow-up?
I, I don't know that one off the top of my head, I could certainly ask. I know it was, it was, it was eventually, it was eventually closed out, I suspect, in the rest of the filing, which, I didn't email the whole thing, because it was this thing, but I suspect in the rest of the filing, there's probably, the loop has been closed on that, because we have to close the loop. I don't want to be negative, but a lot of these tribes, you have to file application fees with them to review this. And some of these application fees is significant, and a lot of tribes claim that they have an area that it doesn't necessarily have to be their reservation.
I'll just take it as there's a loop that needs to be closed, we'll take a look.
Um, yeah, yeah.
I'm fairly confident it was closed, because the six twenty was closed.
Any other comments for Ron from the board? Uh, next, I'd like to ask Robert Lusardi if he has any comments. We specifically wanted you to, given this discussion of the right of way, if you had any thoughts on that? And also on section seven, seven, three, six of the, of the village code, if you had any thoughts on that. Should this board approve the, or grant the application, the next step is to look at a variance. And the variance has to do with access to the site again. So, there's separate issues, but they're somewhat connected. But I'm going to defer to you, Robert, from this point.
Yeah, I, I, I've looked at, I've, I've read the applicant's letter.
Can you speak up, let me stand up?
I'll try, but I have, I just want you to know, I have bronchitis. I'll do my best. Generally speaking, title issues and zoning issues are, are not the same. All right. The, the zoning board should not get involved in bringing title issues into its deliberation, except, for example, your, your, your law says that they, the applicant has to demonstrate that he's the owner of the property, and it also says you have to show you have access.
Right.
So, what the applicant has shown is he has ownership, there's a deed that's been presented, and he showed the right of way, which I have traced out based on the map. And there is a right of way that goes from the applicant's property to Moffett Road. It's twenty-five feet at its narrowest point, all right? Now, the lot was also, from my review, looks like it was created in nineteen seventy. The village enacted zoning in nineteen seventy-two. So, it may well be a legal lot, having been pre-existing non-conforming, even though it doesn't necessarily have the road frontage that present code would require. That having been said, the law also says that you cannot issue a building permit unless there is suitable access to a property. And that's seven, seven, thirty-six of the state code. It's also contained in our local zoning code. It's also one of the requirements in the cell tower law, that there be adequate access to the property. So, I would, I, I would answer the question this way, it's your job to determine that what's there, what's shown on the map, which does appear to have a basis in a deed, whether that's adequate access, whether it needs to be improved, and so forth. Whether or not, and I, I can tell you too, that the, the language in the deed is, it's a right of way. It does not say anything other than that, it's a right of way. I've read the case decided by the applicant, I've also done my own research. I think it's, it's essentially correct that in the absence of limiting language, where it's a landlocked parcel, that's the key. If it's not a landlocked parcel, it's different, but if it's a landlocked parcel, an easement's been given to access that parcel, there's a, there's an easement, more or less by implication or necessity, that the installation of utilities is also permitted within that, that easement area, even though it's just a right of way. It's a debatable point. There are some older cases that go the other way, all right? But the bottom line to that is, there's, there's at least, what we call in the law, this is a prima facie basis for saying that they have, they have legal access to this property. And I think it would be up to the neighboring property owners to, if they, if their position is that that easement does not permit installation of utilities, to bring a challenge. They can bring a declaratory judgment action, they can bring an application for injunction to prohibit this use from going forward. But the case law is, is, I agree with the case law that where there's at least a prima facie basis to show that there's access, we can't challenge the legal basis of that access. What, what you can look at is what actually they're claiming exists from the document that they presented, and that is a twenty-five-foot easement at its narrowest point shared by multiple properties.
Okay, I was curious, if there was a house being built on that site, would, again, the house would get no electricity under this spot? This, I mean, the issue here is, somebody wanted to build a house, no, they, they wouldn't be able to put electricity?
No, they, they would have, they-
Or?
No, what I'm saying is-
No, I know you're not saying that, but I'm just, I'm just thinking.
There would be an issue, there would be a legal issue that the neighbors could bring.
Right.
To question whether or not the, Mr. Logan has the right to bring utilities into that property, okay? The language in the deed is, is not entirely clear. It says it's a right of way across the property, all right? You could, there are cases that say that that doesn't include the right to install utilities. But, so Mr. Goryoso is correct, there is some third department case law that says that where it's a landlocked parcel, and I think this, it's considered a landlocked parcel, because I don't believe it has access to the public road anywhere else, that there's an implication that where there's an easement to access that property, it includes the right to install utilities within that easement area. There's another question, I guess, so, so to answer your question, if somebody was building a home there, I would, I would suggest that they, they could make that claim that they have that right, but it's a debatable claim, what I'm saying. The neighbors could challenge it, and the case may go one way or it may go another, but they have a sufficient basis, in my opinion, to support an application before this board. And it's not the position of this board to be prosecuting property rights for neighboring property owners. That law is pretty clear. You're here to make zoning decisions, not litigate property rights issues.
So, as long as we're satisfied that legal access has been, is on the maps, it's up to us, then, to determine if that access is suitable, is improvable to the point where we can get sufficient access, fire safety, that kind of thing, into or out of the property, that's really what we need to be looking at.
That's right, and it's up to the neighbors to challenge whether or not that easement can be interpreted to include putting in utility lines. So, there's one other question there, and I don't know, off the top of my head, the answer to it, but the utility lines are showing going directly under the traveled way of that access property. And I don't know whether that's the code or not, all right? But that would be a question that should be addressed at some point in the site plan review, whether that's a, whether putting electric lines under a traveled way is code compliant.
Okay, well, that, that should be easy to figure out.
Can I ask a question to that, Louis?
Yeah.
I, I understand that we can't rule on that property matter, but could we rule that, that that property matter needs to be resolved before we could?
No, the case law suggests otherwise.
Even if we know there's a known dispute, is, is the village at all liable if the easement owner award a win, and?
No, you know, what, what the Detroit property owner should do is go to court for declaratory judgment action and ask for an injunction. If an injunction is issued by a court, then I would suggest, yes, that, that would be sufficient for us to not have a right to decision. But short of that, no, it's my opinion that we would not be in a position to do that. But again, it's a, it's, it's an issue.
You're saying it's an issue for the neighbor, not for the board, other than looking at the suitability of entering an egressed site for the planning board to decide, and like you say, for public safety?
Right.
I think that's good advice.
Just to give you another example, if, if, if Mr. Logan came in here asking for a cell tower application, to build a cell tower on the roof of this building, all right? I think the board would be within his rights to say, you know, you're not the owner of this building, I can make an application for the cell tower on it. And that's why I'm saying, you have to at least make a, a prima facie case, you have to at least make a showing that you have these rights. And it's my opinion, having read carefully the deed and traced it on your site plan application, where the easement area, the easement area goes all the way from this property out to Moffett Road. And it's various dimensions along the way, the average dimension's twenty-five feet here off Moffett Road. But if there's a, there's a meets and bounds, and there's an easement all the way from it, the easement does not say it's limited to ingress and egress, all right? I, I, I agree with that point as well. It does not say that it's an easement for utilities, okay? So, there's a maybe ambiguity there.
Right.
And so, a court would have to decide whether or not that easement, and we're in a different department, third department's up in the law, but you're in the second department here. It's a appellate division case law, I can't find any other cases on the, on the state. But it's a debatable point in the courts, whether or not that includes the right to install utilities in that same easement area. But I agree with counsel, if there is, there is case law where it's a landlocked parcel, it's an implication that includes not only ingress and egress, but also utilities to service a building and property.
All right, thank you, I think that's, that's a great answer. So, I mean, from our perspective, perhaps, we're not going to consider that as part of our deliberations moving forward. And the property owner can, if they want to do an injunction, et cetera, et cetera, that would be their responsibility.
Right.
Okay. Yes, Chris, go ahead.
We're requesting, what the request before us is a special permit under, under our local village zoning code, as well as a potential variance under the state village law? Is it your read that those are the only two questions that we should be considering before us in terms of the village code? Was that, was the applicant complete in that way, in terms of all potential variances and requests are before us?
Well, no, the, the special permit that's being applied for, there's numerous criteria that we have to consider. As far as, you know, zoning nonconformities, the only one that I've seen, I, I, I don't know if Ron agrees with me or not, but I, and I don't know if the building inspector identified any other nonconformities between this particular lot and the posed use on the lot, and the requirements of the zoning law per se, for lot area, dimension, setbacks, things of that nature. There's an issue about access, whether the access is sufficient. There's an issue whether or not, now, under the, under the village code, you know, the private road does not appear to meet the definition of a street. A lot has to have frontage on a street, and this road does not appear to meet that definition. It has to either be a, a public street, a village, county, state highway, or a street unapproved subdivision map. However, again, it looks to me like this lot is pre-existing non-conforming, in that it was created in nineteen seventy, which would have been before our zoning would have been, in fact. So, it does have certain status in that regard, but it still does not have actual frontage on a, on a street. That being the case, you now have to, you'll have to consider fire, safety, and other public safety and access issues with regard to the way this road comes in, how long it is. Well, if these certain communities had a cul-de-sac, that's, how long a cul-de-sac, it takes a thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet. So, you have to look at how this road comes in, and whether or not this road provides suitable access. I mean, that's an issue for you, and that's, and that's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tablo, the two eighty-eight variance, it's seven, seven, thirty-six subdivision two, in the village code. And I, I gave you a copy of seven, seven, thirty-six subdivision two, and that sets forth the criteria for determining the suitability of the access to the site.
So, we, we might defer that to you, Steve. What do you think, Chris?
Thanks, sir.
I think that is, it sounds like a planning board question. All right, so here we are, any other questions?
Oh, no, it's a zoning, it's a zoning board.
Zoning board, all right.
Zoning board, nice.
Take the closer one.
But you certainly can draw on the planning board for-
Expertise?
Expertise, so do that.
Okay, I know we want to move this meeting along. Any other questions for the village attorney from the board? And we'd like to open up the public hearing to members of the community. And we'd like, we will start with the sign-in sheet, but everybody, even if you didn't sign in, you'll be able to speak. If you'd like to keep your questions, you know, like we said, three to five minutes, in a respectful tone, and we can start.